Test one, two. Testing one, two, three. Is that right? Call to order the city council session tonight for Monday, October 7th, 2024. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
A roll call, Amanda.
Mark Bitner.
Here.
Shannon Derby.
Here.
Bill Leclerc.
Here.
Doug Brand.
Here.
Tim Petrie. Bonnie Shimalunas.
Here.
Scott Steckmesser.
Here.
Adam Mahusky.
Darla Leclerc.
Here.
All present.
Thank you all for that. On to number four, which we can skip because everyone is here tonight. And then on to number five, public hearing. We have two of them. The first one is amendment to conditional use permit for Sovey's Auto Service, 1421 Washington Street. The recommended action after the public hearing will be a motion to approve the conditional use permit as recommended by the plan commission. Since it is a public hearing, I will have three calls for the public hearing. If you wish to talk about this one particular item, the amendment for the Sovey's Auto Service, please step up to the podium on your left, state your name and address for the record. I will now open up the first call. See no one, I will close the first call and open up the second call. See no one, I will close the second call and open up the third and final call. See no one, I will close the final, the third call and bring it back to council, looking for a motion to approve the conditional use permit.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve an existing business and extended future.
Thank you. Oh, second, second by Bill. Any council discretion discussions? See none, this will be a roll call vote. Amanda.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas. Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Mahusky.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
All in favor.
Thank you all for that. On to the second public hearing tonight. This is amendment to section 10 dash 1 dash 15 G four B four of the zoning ordinance pertaining to driveways in front and street side yards. Again, this is a public hearing, so I will do three calls. Again, if you wish to talk about this one item for the public hearing, podium is still on your left and just state your name and address for the record. Opening up the first call. See no one, I will close the first call and open up the second call. I will now close the second call and open up the third and final call. See no one, I will close the third and final call. Motion then back to the council to waive reading and approve the zoning ordinance amendment. Thank you, Doug, second by Shannon. Any council discussion? I do believe this was. Oh yeah, just changing the driveway entrance way. There was going to be something about a more permanent in the future overall ordinance to fix it, but this is just temporary one for now. Anything else?
It might be valuable to share the citizens. It's basically what it is, is when you have new construction of wide garages, the driveway goes the entire width of the face of the garage, but it tapers down to the street to meet the records.
Anything else? See none, this will be a roll call vote. Amanda.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas. Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Mahusky.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc. Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
All in favor.
Thank you all for that. On to number six, input from the public. If you wish to address the council about something that's on this agenda or something you want to see on a future agenda, please step up to the podium on your left and state your name and address for the record. Input from the public.
My name is Betty Grams. I live at 1908 Garfield Street here in Two Rivers, smack dab in the middle of Neshota Park, so I have the best view in the whole city, just to brag. I have some comments pertaining to the Neshota Park plan, and if it's okay, I would like to give everybody a copy. I'm a retired school teacher, I put everything. The note on the. That's who it's for. And I don't see Greg here this evening, so there's an extra copy for Greg. And this, I know this Neshota Park plan is a continuation of what was presented on January 10th of 2023, and that's when I first became aware of it. And one of my concerns was vertical parking on Garfield Street. That has since, to my knowledge, been debunked. It's not going to happen. But I do have a concern, and at the back of your packet is a copy of the map that you received, I believe, on September 16th from Mike Mathis from the Park and Rec Department. There are many things that I have concerns about, but the primary one is the number seven on both your map and in my comments. The new secondary trail running from Garfield Street to the recently constructed new main trail just west of the playground, and then that that trail ends at the concession stand. The map shows the trail cutting in half, Neshota Park with a paved sidewalk, and then a large concrete pad with an art or monument sort of thing. As far as I know, that has not been commissioned. If you look at the map, it's on Garfield Street, it's like a half circle. It looks like on the map that it's almost two lots wide, the concrete pad they're talking about putting in to put this art monument. My concern is, and I'm not going to, you guys can all read, but 30 to 35 days in the summertime, we're busy. No doubt, we have overflow parking all over the place. But taking that into consideration, this map wants to funnel traffic from Garfield Street through the heart of the park, to the playground, to the concession area, to the most congested area on all of his life. I lived in my home 18 years. You know where people go in the summer on those busy days that are parking on Garfield Street? Line of Vision, Parking Lot One. You know what's at Parking Lot One? That big beautiful sign that tells you beach conditions. Also, a paved crosswalk. Also, the South Beach. The South Beach is the least populated part of the beach. If I'm going and I want to have a good day at the beach and I want, I want to be on top of everybody, I'm going to go to the South Beach. If I bring my dog, which let me tell you, a lot of people parking on Garfield have a dog, and I think that a lot of them are return, you know, they return year after year, they know that, okay, I can go over to the South Beach as long as my dog is on a leash. I can have my dog on the leash over at South Beach. I did make a comment, I'm very familiar with Lake Michigan north to south, for 100 miles either direction. I can't, I can't remember Kenosha, Sheboygan, El Gomo, Kamani, anywhere where there's this big, beautiful, wide, flat space, and yet cut it in half with a sidewalk that's going to get minimal usage. My other understanding is as far as bicycles. I believe there's a city ordinance that restricts bicycles on the sidewalk, so it's not, it's not meant as a bike path. Let's see. I can just, area. Yeah, and every neighbor I've spoken to, I have two neighbors, Julie Schrader, I gave her permission, this monument will literally, when she's looking out her front door, that's where it is, she's looking out her bedroom window, there it is, she's looking out her living room window, there's this. And why? Who's it for? Who's going to see it? A few days a year, less than maybe 8% of the days of the year were busy, who's going to see it? Is my time off? Oh, Jules. Another concern is maintenance year round. Right now on the beach, it's pretty good, but it's intermittent. The last few days, we've had a great deal of sand, there was a great deal of sand on the walkway. They did, they just moved the sand so you can walk on the walkway over the beach, but what is the plan to keep the sand on the beach? You know, there's so many, there's so many factors, and probably I'm a little more sensitive to it because I'm like right there, and I literally will get sand crossing Pierce, crossing through the park, and the dust bowl when they're mowing, I'm getting, you know, that's all, my car's always full of dust. But maintenance year round, snow removal, that's a big one. Is there a plan? Because we don't have a concrete plan for snow removal on the beach. Is there going to be snow removal on this pathway, taking us to the Park and Concession Stand? And truthfully, in the wintertime, why would I park on Garfield Street if I want my kids to play over in this playground? When, what did I counted? How many parking spaces are going to be over there that were, we have 32? 44 parking spaces the map calls for, they're planning to make on Pierce Street. They're also planning to widen Pierce Street, they're also planning to make a new walkway on the map. Zlatnik, we spent a lot of money building this new walkway on Zlatnik, the sand has eroded so much, it's rarely clear. You're not really walking on a walkway, you're kind of gouging the sand on the walkway. I'll be, if I could have just one quick moment about the bathrooms, I'm kind of detail oriented. So I went over, this plan talks about the restrooms next to the horseshoe pits. Do you know there's eight stalls in that bathroom and four sinks? And I think they might even have a changing table. How many stalls are in the busiest bathroom by the beach? Four, and not the greatest condition, and four sinks. And then, once you enter and you go to your right, there's a very narrow bench. I'm not sure that bench is even 12 inches deep. So yeah, I can sit on that bench, I can sit a bed on that bench, I have no privacy. What do I do if I need some privacy? Am I gonna, am I gonna take one of those four stalls for 10 minutes? Because people are already backed up off the door. So I guess that's my concern. Why are we doing a newer bathroom, a much newer structure, and negating that bathroom? And I remember clearly, January 10th of last year, I bought that up. And as far as I know, it's been pushed off again, as it's been pushed off again. I'm hoping to give this also to Park and Rec, and I will get a copy of all my comments and concerns to my general. Neshota Park is a jewel. We're retired military, you know, we've lived all over the country and overseas, this is a jewel. Protect it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, everyone. My name is Ramash Kanaatra. My wife and I, we are the part-time resident of Two Rivers. In the past, we used to live in El Gomo at one time, but anyway, we live on Garfield Street. What I saw the proposal in dissecting the Neshota Park, in my opinion, humble opinion, is like a stab in the heart. Because Neshota Park, I think, is a jewel in the crown. If you go up and down, and we are just a part-time resident of Wisconsin, so I may not be as knowledgeable as Betty Grams, but I tell you, it's a one of a kind, Neshota Park, and in my opinion, if you put a sidewalk, not only is it going to cost taxpayers money, like she said, the maintenance, but also the question is why? You know, like I said, we live in Asheville, North Carolina, which is in the, being in the mountains, of course, everybody knows right now, but nationwide, people are going back to the nature. And here, I think by putting a sidewalk, is stepping, you know, taking a step backward. Out of 52 weeks, weekends, I believe, only four or five weekends, we get the overflow traffic from the holidays. So I don't think it's going to be used, and as it is, human nature is that, if I live on 20th Street or 19th Street, and if I'm taking my dog for a walk, I'm going to go diagonally, it's human nature, we want to take the shortest cut. So I think that maybe you need to, my humble request is to reconsider this sidewalk or, you know, dissecting the park. What Two Rivers in that area we need, and it is my wife's idea, so I took give her credit, I need a dog park. Majority of the neighbors we see, they walk with their dog. And we have a dog park in Asheville where we live, is so widely used. I think so, maybe you need to consider having a dog park. But other than that, once again, is, Neshota Park is a crown, and so just consider what I have said, and maybe we'll get some good news. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Input from the public?
And yes, I agree, I also live across from the park, right in that area, and I know part of it was that it's underutilized, and I think that's okay, number one. Secondly, if you want more, get more grills, benches, I know they're going to put up different trees because these trees are, are, they are getting old and some are dead, but some, those are some of the things that we, that really would help. It's, it's not so much that area unless you're having a family reunion or a group of people, but it's nice to have an area where they can just play and have, and Ramash, I love that part about, we're trying to get more back to nature instead of cutting through it, but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I do have something else to say. Yeah. Excuse me, because my age, I can't remember everything at one time. Yeah, really, it is, and I don't think we are immune to that. If you guys proceed with this plan, how many trees are going to get cut? And what about the dead trees already in the park? Is something going to be done to that? There are a few. That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Input from the public? See nothing else? On to council communications. What are and other communications from citizens? Anybody have anything? I did have one person reach out, same topic as the other people just mentioned, about the Neshota parking option. I'll make sure that gets over to Mike. I know, I think Adam and Doug were in on that email too already, I just can't get it open for some. So I'll just make sure that goes over, gets over to Mike. Anyone else? On to number eight, council reports from boards, commissions, and committees. Anyone have any information for us tonight? Yes, Mark?
Early this morning, we had a committee on aging, and a comment was made during the committee, I think that all the citizens of the community should be aware of, is that the two trust cars will be operational and available to shuttle citizens to election sites during the election day. In service, all you need to do is contact the senior center in advance for your pickup arrangements, but I encourage anyone who needs transportation, use the trust cars, and I encourage everyone on our community to vote. Thank you.
Carol?
Yeah, from Main Street, just remember, everyone, the Apple Fest is this weekend. And then downtown trick or treat is going to be on Saturday, October 26th. There are a lot of businesses that are going to be handing out candy, and the time runs from 11:00 AM until 2:00 PM, and that whole downtown area is just filled with kids. It's pretty amazing, actually, so drive carefully too when you're going that way. Cool City Christmas and the parade, still planning, is in the works. And we do have our Fall Wine and Beer Walk, the tickets are available, that's going to be on October 25th, it's a Friday, and that goes from 5:00 to 8:30. And it looks like we've got, at this point, a dozen hosts who serve the beer and wine samples. Badger Night is going to be on November 2nd. Nishota Charitable Foundation hosts it, and it's going to be at the Community House. For EAB, um, the big thing right now, and it's on our agenda to talk about a little bit later, but, um, that is one of the things that, uh, we're waiting to see how it all ends up. And then we can, we'll know what steps to take next as a, as a board. Um, right now, we're concentrating on the video series. Um, we're trying to get, um, some suggestions for utility bill inserts um, that are, um, focused on environmental. So that's something that we're going to be talking about at our next, um, next meeting. And, uh, so yeah, the big thing is the gardens. That's all they got.
Anyone else? Nothing else? We'll go to number nine, uh, Acting City Manager's Report, Ben.
Thank you. I guess I'll ask Jeff Dawson to come up and lead this one for invited guests.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm proud to announce that the prestigious Wisconsin Library Association Librarian of the Year for 2024 goes to our very own Terry Yale, Youth Services Coordinator at the Lester Public Library. Round of applause. If you don't mind, I have some comments. And then, uh, maybe Terry can run the circuit, shake your hands. That'd be delightful. Um, Terry Yale's been with the Lester Public Library since 1998. She holds a bachelor's degree in elementary education from Western Illinois University. And after being named 2014 WLA Paralibrian of the Year, attained her master's in library and information science from UW Milwaukee. And that was via a full ride scholarship from the Wisconsin Library Association. Terry is an active member of the Wisconsin Library Association Youth Services Section, serving as the Youth Services Section Chair in 2017. She's also a member of the American Library Association, Association for Library Service to Children, Young Adult Library Services Association, and Public Library Association. Terry consistently, consistently raises the bar in material selection and programming for infants to teens at our library. Terry introduced and continues to widen the scope of Reach Out and Read in Manitowoc County, a program that put 2,382 books in the hands of parents and their young children last year. In 2023, she submitted a successful grant application for the first ever West Foundation Director's Choice Imagining Grants to promote early literacy and environmental awareness in partnership with Two Rivers Parks and Rec, Woodland Dunes, Nature Center and Preserve. And as a result, story walks were erected on library grounds and at Xander Park. And a large part of Xander Park was restored to wetland with raised boardwalk and natural play features added. During the pandemic, Terry spearheaded Storytime Youth and Family To-Go Packs. The plan was to discontinue the program once the building reopened. But she made the decision to continue To-Go Packs due to the positive response. From its start in May 2020 through July 2024, these packs have reached more than 25,000 users. Terry has championed teen engagement in the community with TR Teen Nights, an after-hours library program that has expanded to include community partners, including the city's Parks and Rec Department, excuse me, uh, the Two Rivers School District, Woodland Dunes, and Hamilton Woodtype Museum. The partners invite teens into their spaces for safe, inexpensive fun activities. The program provides enriching events and demonstrates that the community values, our community values teens, and will find ways to encourage them. Through our efforts, the Rotary Club of Two Rivers awarded funds to implement a steam area in the library. Terry has formed a strong partnership with the Two Rivers School District. She meets regularly with administrators and educators and was a participant in, in community discussions to map out goals and strategies for a district three-year plan. She is president of the Lighthouse Learning Academy Governance Board. Terry is dedicated to visiting district schools to do book talks. She brings library books to these visits for all students to check out, providing important access for children who do not visit the library. This is no easy task. In 2023-24 school year, she visited 32 classes monthly and checked out more than 1,600 books to students. Terry is a well, well-versed advocate for best practices regarding the way children learn and shares his expertise with her community and her peers. Terry leads the Early Literacy Work Group for the Investing Early Coalition of Healthiest Manitowoc County, a group which provides collaborative leadership to improve the well-being of the county. She helped organize, organize last Friday's community baby shower that was held across the street at the Community House. She has presented on youth programming and innovation in programming at past Wisconsin Library Association conferences and has served as a panelist and presenter for webinars with both Youth Services Section and the Wisconsin Library Association Outreach Services Roundtable. She also recently wrote the article, "Practice the Practices: Kids Learn Big in Dramatic Play Areas." This is for the Fall 2024 Issue of Children in Libraries, the National Journal of the Association for Library Service to Children. And because of the article, Terry has been invited to sit on a panel at the National American Library Association Conference in Philadelphia in June. Due to the success of the local Reach Out and Read partnership, Terry serves on a Wisconsin Reach Out and Read Committee that is compiling a toolkit to maximize partnerships between libraries and clinics. Terry is also an advocate for librarianship as a career, arranging behind-the-scenes tours, career days, and community service projects for area youth. She has participated in internship programs, mentoring college students, considering a library career. The Lester Public Library, Two Rivers, and its surrounding communities, and I'll go so far as to say the entire state of Wisconsin, are lucky beneficiaries of Terry's dedication, creativity, and vision in providing outstanding library services. She also brings joy to reading and those who come to the library to partake in her programming. Terry will officially receive the award at the Wisconsin Library Association Conference's Award Dinner on November 7th in Green Bay. Please, another round of applause for Terry.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Terry.
Yes, he's on vacation.
Such disappointment when they see me up here. All right, on with the City Manager's Report. Um, staffing updates. Police officer full-time, we're accepting applications. I currently have two conditional offers out. Um, one will be starting tomorrow, actually, the other one in the near future. But we will have two openings that we're looking to fill as soon as we can. That's been quite a process. Fire Department, they've had recent hires and promotions. Um, I don't know if you have anything that you wanted to announce today, probably at the next meeting. City Planner, Community Development Director, still accepting applications. And then newly, uh, the City Manager's Admin Assistant Deputy City Clerk. Um, they recently hired Val Vander Linden. So we will hear more from that, I presume, probably the next council meeting.
I, yeah, I can give a little bit of background. So she currently works for the city of Manitowoc in their clerk's office as their administrative support specialist. Um, she is a local here from Two Rivers, um, and is very excited to be joining our team and starting for next week.
We did okay with the last one from Manitowoc with, with you?
Well, decided maybe.
Uh, the Roosevelt Avenue Reconstruction Project update. In sense, I believe Matt said either tomorrow or the following day, we should be wrapping up with the concrete work over there. Um, after that, it's going to be all the planting of the topsoil, sod, cleanup, and painting. So moving along well with the Roosevelt project. In-person absentee voting for November 5th election begins October 22nd. I know it's been very frantic in the city clerk's office, um, getting ready for that and all the training associated with it. Lead laterals replacement in the scattered sites. Contractor began working the last week of September on the 34th Street and Prairie Street, where it consists of replacing lead water services with PEX tubing and defective sanitary sewer laterals. I think that started, was that two weeks ago? Yeah. New Street Sweeper in Service, I saw this up front just the other day and thought I was seeing things. But yes, it's out and about, and apparently all the staff loves it. Um, it apparently munches things up better, is what I was told from Matt. So you'll have that out. Um, the believed anticipation, anticipated date is around October 14th-ish uh, for leaf pickup, but obviously that's dependent. There hasn't been a whole lot of leaf, uh, falling so far. Washington Street Bridge Sidewalk, everybody's probably seen that. Um, they just finished up on the sidewalk. There's still some sealing to do, or sealant to do. Um, and after that, that'll be, that'll be a done deal. Sandy Bay Highlands Phase Three, my understanding is that, um, the first phase of Phase Three will probably be completed around Thanksgiving. Um, so that's moving forward as planned. Financing agreements for Roosevelt Sanitary Sewer Scattered Light Letter replacement will be on October 21st agenda, so just a reminder there. Again, I talked about the leaf pickup similar to last year, and weather permitting, and we'll see how that goes and keep everybody updated as we move forward. We have new canine apparel available for purchase, um, a newly designed shirt and sweatshirt that bears a similar resemblance to Daisy and Zante on the back. Not many of those, so pick them up while you can. We will put out another order when needed. Apple Fest is on Saturday, October 12th, 9:00 until 3:00 p.m. here in our downtown. There's been a lot of questions about, um, road blockage for some reason this year, so it'll be 16th to 18th Street, just on Washington Street. So there will, there will be detours, um, set up, and you'll be able to move through town smoothly like you normally would. Um, so you'll still have Jefferson, Monroe, and Adams Street available. I was also told by Mark, by the way, apparently the sign may be wrong, um, in, in Central Park, stating that it's the 13th, so we'll get that fixed if that's the case. A Big Woodtype Letterpress Workshop, Saturday, October 12th, at Hamilton Woodtype and Printing Museum. Senior Center Health and Information Fair is Thursday, October 17th. They're in a gym at the Community House. Finally, another photo by Jeff Dawson. That's all I have.
Awesome. Yes, Adam?
I have a question. Under staffing, you talked about, uh, we have two applications that you accepted for new hires under the police department? Did you say where you're looking now for another two more? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's in addition to the two new hires?
Yeah, we just received a recent, um, intention to leave, so there's one that's likely going to be leaving soon.
Okay.
Yeah. And the, and the other ones, we had those filled with three conditional offers. I think I mentioned it the last one. Um, unfortunately, the department that he was at provided him a, a better paying and road job that he didn't otherwise have. So he's staying with his department.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Ben, uh, on to the consent agenda. Uh, under A, we have presentation of minutes. We have the City Council Regular Meeting from September 16th, 2024, and the City Council Work Session from September 23rd, 2024. The recommended action will be a motion to waive reading and adopt the minutes. Under B, we have minutes of meetings. Uh, we have two. One is from the Plan Commission, September 9th, and from September 23rd, 2024, and the Business and Industrial Development Committee, Community Development Authority, from September 24th, 2024. The recommended action will be a motion to receive and file. And then under C, we have application and petitions. Uh, there's one of those. It's an application for temporary Class B license for Nishoto Charitable Foundation Incorporated for Badger Night, November 2nd, 2024, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the J.E. Hamilton Community House. The recommended action will be a motion to approve the application and authorize issuance of the license. Uh, the recommended action for the entire consent agenda will be a motion to approve the consent agenda with the various actions recommended. Looking for that motion? Thank you, Bill. Second by Mark. Thank you. Uh, any council discussion?
I encourage everybody to go to Badger Night. Um, that is a fun event, and, um, there's a lot of celebrity attendance too.
Anything else? See none. This will be an all in favor. Indicate by saying aye. Aye, aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Uh, on to another, on to 11, City Council Formal Items. Under A, we have a proclamation declaring the week of October 6th through the 12th, 2024, as Public Power Week. Uh, the recommended action is a motion to read and adopt the proclamation. Do we have a motion to do that first? Thank you. Second by Tim. Uh, any council discussion? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote of end.
Tim Petrie?
Aye.
Bonnie Shimunas?
Aye.
Scott Deckmesser?
Aye.
Adam Mahusky?
Aye.
Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
Mark Bitner?
Aye.
Shannon Derby?
Aye.
Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Doug Brand?
Aye.
All in favor?
The floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Happy Public Power Week. City of Two Rivers Public Power Week Proclamation. Whereas we, the citizens of City of Two Rivers, place high value on local control over community services and therefore have chosen to operate a community-owned, locally-controlled, not-for-profit electric utility. And as consumers and owners of our electric utility, have a direct say in the utility operation and policies. And whereas Two Rivers Utilities provides our homes, businesses, social services, and local government agencies with reliably efficient, cost-effective electricity employing sound business practices designed to ensure the best possible service at not-for-profit rates. And whereas Two Rivers Utilities is a valuable community asset that can contribute substantially to the well-being of local citizens through energy efficiency, customer service, environmental protection, economic development, and safety awareness. And whereas Two Rivers Utility is a dependable and trustworthy institution whose local operation provides many consumer protections and continues to make our community a better place in which to work and live. Now therefore be it resolved that Two Rivers Utilities will continue to work to bring lower-cost, safe, reliable electricity to community homes and businesses, just as it has since 1902, the year when the utility was created to serve the citizens of Two Rivers. And be it further resolved that the week of October 6th through 12th be designated as Public Power Week in order to honor Two Rivers Utilities for its contributions to the community and to make its consumer owners, policymakers, and employees more aware of its overall contributions to the well-being. And be it further resolved that our community joins hands with more than 2,000 other public power systems in the United States through local community ownership, ensuring cost-cutting services for electricity customers. Therefore, the City Council of the City of Two Rivers hereby proclaims the week of October 6th through the 12th, 2024, as Public Power Week, dated the 7th day of October, 2024.
Thank you, sir. Happy Power Week to you. Uh, let's see, on to B, City Council Consideration of Matters Pertaining to Front Yard Produce Gardens. Report from Councilmember Darla Leclerc, Chair of the Report from Councilmember Darla Leclerc, Chair of the Environmental Advisory Board, regarding the 2023-2024 pilot program.
I can't believe it's already been a year, pretty much, since we were last talking about this. We are at the end of our second year as a pilot program, and between 23 and 24, 2023 and 2024, the way it sounds best is if I say that our participation tripled, but that means it went from two to six people, so, but we're, we're on an upswing. And I've been in close contact with everyone who is, who has participated, and I've gotten a lot of really nice feedback that we can take into consideration for how we can tweak this further. I just wanted to say that, you know, there are, there are definitely people who do not want this, and I would like to just stress the fact that in our Senate and our Assembly, there is a bill. They're going to be reintroducing it, so I don't know what their new numbers are, but it's called the Vegetable Garden Protection Act, and it did clear committee. I was, I spoke at, on September 20th of last year in support of this, this act, and the public hearing was for the Committee on Local Government. And Sheesh Sorwell and Andre Jacques were both there, and I think it was a pretty compelling argument. One thing I want people to realize is that with our program that we have right now, which I would like to, because we've done it two years, take it off pilot status and make it a thing, is the fact that it is more structured than what this bill is, would offer us. And I think that keeping our program is going to allow us to keep control over what can be in our community, because right now, I mean, it could, I totally get their philosophy and I agree with it, but the thing is, I know that it would never fly in this community. And I like the idea of having, having some guidelines and some parameters on what to do, because you have neighbors, and you want to be in line with the rest of your, your neighborhood, and it's not a hard thing to, to do that and still be able to grow vegetables. If you go out on our website and you go under Environmental Advisory Board, we have a, a section that you can click on for the, for this, this initiative, and it's got photos. We made sure that we posted photos this year so people could see the progression. And I think it went very well. It was very smooth, and before we have our, I think it's November 4th, City Council Meeting, hopefully I will have all of the feedback from people, and I'll be able to give a more comprehensive presentation at that time. But I just want everyone just to keep that in mind. We could, we consider this, consider doing this so we retain some control. And you might have seen in, in our packet, there was a, a letter that I had sent to, or email that I had sent to Sue Riley, kind of outlining what our, what our plans are. Like for tonight, it's just getting it over to Plan Commission so we can start the process. But please go out to the website, and if anyone has any questions about this, feel free to contact me.
Thank you for that. Any questions for Darla?
I believe you mentioned, too, it'd be a public hearing for the general public to talk about and express on November 4th.
Right. Right.
Going along with that, number two on the agenda is consider requesting Plan Commission recommendation on amending the zoning code to allow front yard produce gardens as permitted obstruction in front yards as an ongoing basis under the same parameters as the current 2023-2024 pilot program. The recommended action would be a motion to refer this request to the Plan Commission for consideration at its October 14th, 2024 regular meeting, as recommended by the advisory, Environmental Advisory Board. So looking for a motion for that. Thank you, Doug. Second by Bill. Any council discussion? Yes.
Obligated 80% of this.
That's only, no, that would come back depending on what the Plan Commission decides. So that, that's, yeah, that's, that'd be a later time. Maybe not what the Plan Commission decides, but when it comes back to council, then that's when we set that up. Yep. Anything else? Yes, Bonnie?
Actually, this, when Mark said that, kind of, sometimes I wonder if it shouldn't go out with the utility bill, just the way some of those other subjects did, just to get us. I'm always surprised when the community contacts the council for their, with their opinion. I'd be interested to know what the community as a whole thinks, or at least, you know, the people who, who contact us.
Then this will be an all-in-favor. So all-in-favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all for that. On to C. Amendment to Section 9-2-5 of City Ordinances, entitled Loud and Unnecessary Noises, to modify provisions pertaining to noise from construction or repair of buildings and operation of equipment for property maintenance. The recommended action will be a motion to waive reading and adopt the ordinance. Ben, you have anything for this one?
No, just, I guess, a summary quick. A resident had reached out to City Manager Greg Buckley regarding some inconsistencies as far as construction noise. We did find that there was two areas where it kind of contradicted what the noise level should be and, and when. In addition, in discussing that at the work session, I believe it was brought up by Bonnie and maybe a couple others agreed that it should be consistent with also the lawn mowing and lawn care equipment. So in essence, that is exactly what happened, was the one area was removed, so construction activity is not only in just one section, but also defined better. And then in addition, it is now listed as 7 o'clock to 9 p.m. to be consistent with all the other noises that, that could be dealt with, and included in that operation of certain equipment. For whatever reason, we had bug zapper in there, and that was removed from that as well with that questioning that we brought up. So now it's not only the construction noise, but construction activity is defined, and it's consistent with the lawn care.
Thank you for that. Looking for a motion then. Thank you, Darla. Second by, thank you, Shannon. Any council discussion? Seeing nothing, this will be a roll call vote. Amanda?
Scott Stuckmesser?
Aye.
Adam Mahusky?
Aye.
Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
Mark Bitner?
Aye.
Shannon Derby?
Aye.
Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Doug Brand?
Aye.
Tim Petrie?
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you all for that. On to D. City Managers Recommended, Recommended Appointment to Boards and Committees. There's one for Environmental Advisory Board, Heather Gross, for a term expiring May 1st, 2026. The recommended action would be a motion to approve the appointment as recommended by the City Manager. The application is included in our packet, so hopefully you had a chance to look at that. Besides that, we really don't have anything else for this, so we'll just go right to looking for a motion. Thank you, Darla. Second by Mark. Any council discussion? See, none. Thought I saw Bonnie's hands starting to creep up.
Oh, no.
No, nothing, OK. Seeing none, this will be a all-in-favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carried. For letter E, we are going to be skipping it this time around. The Blue Heron Condo Association wanted a little bit more time to review, so we will skip that, and then we will go to F.
Mr. President, I can make a comment. There is a lot of confusion on Facebook regarding publicly on this motion or this topic. I urge people mostly what the topic really is.
Oh, the Blue Heron thing, right?
Yes, the Blue Heron condominium, because it's not as expansive as what they've represented.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thanks, Mark. On to F. Agreement to Provide Develop a Grant from TID Number 12 to Assist Expansion Project at 1419 Washington Street by Lakeshore Commercial LLC, landlord of Solves LLC, DB Solves Auto Service. The recommended action is motion to authorize City Manager and City Clerk to sign the agreement. Ben, you have anything for this one?
I don't, other than there were a couple corrections made that I believe everybody has the highlighted and corrected areas. So most of it was just wording. There was an increase to the amount, because the set amount of the project increased substantially. So therefore, in lieu of that, increasing it, and the discussion with attorneys was that there would be no needed amendment to do this, the same agreement, in order to do any of these corrections, because it's the same project, the same projected plan. And I can be corrected with Weston Dunn if I'm speaking incorrectly, but.
So looking for a motion then to authorize the City Manager and City Clerk to sign the agreement. Thank you, Tim. I have a second by Bonnie. Any council discussion? A none, this will be a roll call vote. Amanda?
Mark Bitner?
Aye.
Shannon Derby?
Aye.
Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Doug Brand?
Aye.
Tim Petrie?
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas?
Aye.
Scott Stuckmesser?
Aye.
Adam Mahusky?
Aye.
Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
All in favor?
OK, on to number 12 for information only. Upcoming this week, Thursday, October 10th, at 6 o'clock, is Personnel and Finance Meeting, and then the City Council Regular Meeting on October 21st, and the City Council Work Session Meeting on Monday, October 28th. So those are some meetings that are upcoming. We do have a closed session tonight. Greg did email Ben and I, it shouldn't take that long. It's just some information to share, pass along, so.
Mr. President, I believe there's a room tax meeting, too.
OK.
On the night, isn't that, is that correct?
Yeah, 4 p.m.
4, OK.
And we'll go into closed session. The City Council reserves the right to enter into closed session per Wisconsin Statute 19.851E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Tonight, we'll discuss possible, possible property purchase. We do not anticipate coming out of closed session to vote on anything except to adjourn. So looking for a motion to go into closed session. Thank you, Tim. Second by Shannon. Roll call, council discussion. Thing, this will be a roll call vote, Amanda.
Shannon Derby?
Aye.
Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Doug Brand?
Aye.
Tim Petrie?
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas?
Aye.
Scott Stuckmesser?
Aye.
Adam Mahusky?
Aye.
Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
Mark Bitner?
Aye.
All in favor?